I would like to call to order the Tuesday, March 5th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Belz?
Present.
Counselor Carey is not here.
Absent.
Absent. Counselor Lopez is excused. Counselor Sharmar?
Here.
Counselor Schinkel is excused. Counselor Silbernagle?
Here.
Mayor Coons?
I'm here. Thank you. And Counselor Sharmar, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
We have more women than men.
We do have more. You are totally outnumbered.
Yeah, all right. So take that, Father Derry.
Like it.
All right, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's Women Take All tonight.
Right.
And I'd like to welcome the folks in our audience to Monmouth City Council meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated for public comments, and under citizen comments, we call it. And if you wish to speak to the council, please fill out a comment card that are back on the table and turn it into the city recorder before we get started here. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask for a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses the comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. But I'd like to thank you for your attendance at the meeting of the Monmouth City Council this evening. And first item on our agenda is actually our consent calendar, which this week consists of approval of the minutes of the council meeting of February 19th and minutes of the council work session of February 19th. Are there any changes or additions to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move approval of both.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, city recorder Bullman, for your fine work again on our minutes. And now that our speaker is here this evening, he'll give him a second to catch our breath, but we have a special presentation this evening about a very important issue, the upcoming 2020 census. And that will be upon us before we know it. But we have some great information here. I'm going to say I got a sneak preview of this presentation at the independent city council, which Counselor Belz and I attended and really look forward to sharing this information with everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me here. I also brought another U.S. Census representative, Greg Ball, currently heads our Salem office. And he's more involved in the operations side of the census where I'm a partnership specialist. My function is to work with elected officials such as yourselves and other trusted leaders in the community to hopefully form a complete count committee.
Could you give us your name again, please?
Yes, John Cummings.
John Cummings, thank you.
Sure. April 1st of next year is Census Day. We will be ready, one way or another, for that date. But I wanted to kind of give a little bit of background. Why do we do the census? The biggest reason is it's in the Constitution. And it's been there kind of since the beginning. Actually, the first census took place in 1790, and it's happened every 10 years since. We use it for the data for a lot of things. The initial purpose was really to figure out how the districts should be carved up for representation. Knowing that the country was going to grow and change, they thought, we need to keep track of population growth. And this slide's kind of interesting because it shows that after the 2010 census, we had some states that grew and some states that didn't grow as much. And you can see that Arizona and Florida gained some seats. New York and New Jersey lost some seats. And we kind of expect the same sort of reshuffling this time around. There's speculation, and it's just speculation, I have no way of knowing, but that Oregon will pick up a sixth seat this time around. If that's the case, they're going to use census data. Where do you put the sixth district? And even if there's not a sixth district, are the five districts truly representative of where the population is? So after the census, expect some redistrict shuffling, whether we get a new seat or not. Second biggest big thing that we now use the census for in modern times is funding. And it's too hard to read on the slide, but the punchline is there's $675 billion of federal money that's redistributed to the states, the counties, the cities through various programs. Not all of it is population-based, but an awful lot of it is. I met with a county supervisor in Lincoln County last week, and she said, before I took this job, I was in the private sector and I wrote grants. And I love census data. I lived on census data. So it's really important. If you're writing a grant, any kind of a proposal, you need to demonstrate what population are you going to impact. And if we didn't count them, you can't reference them. So really important. Our per capita average in Oregon, this is according to a Washington University study, $2,492. That's a lot of money that you miss if you, for every person that you don't count. You could look at it, it costs you $2,500. Other uses? State legislative districts are drawn based on these maps and on this data. State, local, and tribal governments, businesses, and nonprofits use this data. I remember when I was in college, my brother-in-law taught at the university where I went. It was a small town in northern Arizona. And he said, well, I guess we're going to get a McDonald's. So why? Why do we need a McDonald's and why would we get one now? He said, well, the census data just came out, and we are now over 100,000 people. So now McDonald's will be looking at us. And sure enough. So what's new? 2010 is going to be the first time that we're going to invite Internet responses. That's going to be a first. And we're hoping that 45% of our respondents will use the Internet. It saves us a lot of labor. It's a good thing. We also have a toll-free number. If somebody doesn't want or can't use a computer, they can call and talk to us. And then the traditional way, of course, paper. And we will be mailing out early next year. We've re-engineered our address canvassing. Every 10 years, we need to verify how many, you know, where the houses are. And is that house still a house? Did it become a duplex or a restaurant or a vacant lot? You know, so we've re-engineered our address canvassing. So we're only doing about 30% of it in the field. The rest of it is done through other means. So mainly, we're using data from highly trusted sources like planning commissions, like zoning or, you know, permits, as well as, you know, Google Maps. Let's face it, there's a lot of good data there. And then we're also going to provide more automation for our field workers. So this is the road to 2020. We're kind of in the middle of it. Where to establish the count and get everything ready to go? Early 2020, we need to motivate people to participate. March through June, the actual count happens. And then the number crunching begins. And on December 31st, 2020, we will present it to the president. And I didn't say, but if anybody has any questions, feel free to interrupt, or we can take them at the end. Either way.
Can I, the results of the census, while they're available to public entities, are not made public for 70 years, is that right?
Correct. Well, yeah, a little clarification on that. In aggregate, the detail will be available early 2021. First, it goes to the White House, and then shortly thereafter, it's disseminated broadly. But it's only information in aggregate. You can look at a census tract, you can look at a census block, and learn a lot about what's going on there. How many people are there, percentage of, you know, by gender, by race, by age group, et cetera. But we will not release any individual response until 72 years from now.
When the 1950 census is released in a few years, that'll be very exciting for me because that'll be the first time I'll show up on the census.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking forward to that, too. What I'd like to do is go back. I know where my grandparents are from, but I want to see their census data. I want to find, oh, yeah, here they are at 123 Main Street, or whatever it was. Because honestly, the addresses and things have been kind of lost in family.
You can see how much they paid for their house, what they did for a living, what languages they spoke. Exciting stuff.
So I think, yeah, when I'm done with this job, I think I'll have a lot of time on my hands to dig through census data. This is the, these are the questions that we ask. It's basically, it's less information than you give if you order a pizza to be delivered, really. Well, usually, you don't give your age on a pizza delivery, but they've got your credit card number, where we're not asking for that. The 11th question has an asterisk for a very good reason. That is a question that has been proposed, and it's been contested, and it's currently going to go, it's scheduled to go in front of the Supreme Court next month for a final determination. I have no way of knowing how they're going to rule, whether the question's going to be on there or not. I'm not allowed to have an opinion of whether it should be on there or not. Suffice it to say, if it is there, I think it's going to present a challenge because we know that there are members of the community that would not feel comfortable responding. We'll get into a little bit about the hard-to-count population in a minute. But I guess the short answer is, according to the Constitution, participation in the census is mandatory. It doesn't say anything about, do you have to answer all the questions? So I think we've kind of got a potential way to go there, but we'll see. Languages, we're supporting a lot of different languages. 12-plus English will be available in print. Additional 59 languages plus ASL and Braille and large print will be available in guide form, not the actual questionnaire, but hopefully give somebody enough information to where they can get to and answer. So that's another potential challenge. 13 languages is nice. It's not all the languages. And so communicating with non-English speakers is a challenge, quite frankly. So how will it work? We are going to mail to every physical address in the country. However, we're not going to mail to P.O. boxes. And I know in some areas, I'm presuming around here, some of your residents may get their mail delivered at a P.O. box. And when I first heard this, I was kind of taken aback. I thought, well, a lot of people use P.O. boxes. Even if they live in town, they just don't, you know, they travel a lot or whatever. They want to use the mailbox or the P.O. box. And the response I got from our officials is, well, people don't live in P.O. boxes, so we can't count them in P.O. boxes. Also, you might move your house and keep the same P.O. box. So we really are targeting, we have to target the census at the dwelling unit. And so if somebody lives in an area where they don't receive mail at their door, we're hoping that we can get the word out there. They can voluntarily, in mid-March next year, they can voluntarily go online, put in their address, it'll pop up, and, okay, and answer all the questions, and you're done. Nobody will bother you from the census ever again. If they don't take, or you can call the 800 number, either way. If people don't respond that way, we will be sending canvassers door to door. And basically, the way that works is we knock on the door. Hopefully, somebody's home. We fill out the census. We're done. If nobody answers, we'll leave a note with the whole census questionnaire, instructions on what to do with it, and hopefully, they respond. If they don't, we go knock again. Third time, no response, we kind of take a guess. Maybe we'll talk to the neighbors. Is anybody living there? Do they have any kids? You know, try to come up with an estimate of who lives in that house, and then we're done.
Guess you'll have to put posters in those post offices because a lot of rural communities, they just don't have delivery folks.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Absolutely. So, yeah, and I know some people are taken aback by that. And I had a guy last week, very adamant that, no, you've got to mail it to my P.O. box. It's just, it's not going to happen. I'm sorry, it's not going to happen. So that takes care of people that live in, say, single-family dwellings, whether they be apartment, condo, house, ranch, whatever it is. The other ways that we enumerate are group count. And we will actually be sending people to group living facilities in late March of next year. And this would include college dorms, it would include prisons. Some people equate those two things. It could include care facilities, full-time, live-in care facilities. And these present challenges because sometimes people are not real clear. Like, if you're a college kid, you think, no, I live with my parents in wherever they're from. And the parents are thinking, my kid's at college. They'll, well, we need to count, we need to count that person. And we need to count them where they spend most of the time. And if you're in school for nine months, then you need to get counted at school, if that's where you live.
And believe me, we do a good job of trying to convince our college students they live here.
Yeah, and because, yeah, it's a huge impact. So elderly oftentimes are housed in group facilities. And then the third category is non-traditional residences, I guess you could say. It's basically people that are homeless. And there will be a big one-night count effort on, I think it's, I think on March 30th, you know, the day before Census Day. And so we need help there, making sure that we know where the homeless gather, where they live, and get the word out beforehand that census is going to be out conducting this survey, you know, on such and such a night. Make sure you get counted. And again, we're trying to partner with civic groups and municipalities. A couple of ideas that have been floated around is have, you know, hot soup and hot coffee available and spread the word, and, you know, get people to come and get counted. It's really, really crucial. The other category, I have a friend who retired about four years ago, sold his house, bought a Winnebago. That's where he lives. And where he will be on April 1st, 2020, I don't know. But we will be sending people out to places like campgrounds. And if they say, no, no, I live most of the time in Salem, and I'm just here on vacation. Okay, fine, we'll count you in Salem. But other people that are just on the road, don't really have a permanent address, count them right there. So almost 5% of households will receive their census invitation when the census worker knocks on their door. And less than 1% of the households will be counted in person by a census taker. This is our plan, anyway. We touched on this a little bit. I think all census data is private and confidential, and it's only released in aggregate form. There are two laws on the books, Title 13 and Title 26, that govern the use of this data. Any census worker that releases data improperly can be imprisoned for five years and fined for $250,000. So I think everybody at the Census Bureau takes it pretty seriously. Somebody asked, well, what would happen if, after the data's compiled, the administration demanded details? The answer would be, they can only have it in aggregate. And nobody at the census would, anybody that released that data, even at the White House, would be breaking the law. So it's not going to happen, at least not without a big court fight. And, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Years ago, some of you may remember, I know my mom, one of her best friends was, her best friend and the family was shipped off to an internment camp at the beginning of World War II. And I know it tore my mom up. They were best, she was best friends with this little girl. Family owned a grocery store, they lost their grocery store, they lost their house, and what a mess. And it came up in conversation here recently that they used census data to figure out who the Japanese-Americans were. And I thought, that can't be, because we've got Title 13 and Title 26. Well, the answer is, both of those laws were enacted in 1953. They didn't exist back at the time when the census data was used to track down the Japanese and put them in these internment camps. So, I don't know. I feel that these two laws are pretty rock-solid. They've been tested. They've been contested in court. I don't have the details of those, but every time, the courts have always said, no, we got to live to Title 13 and Title 26. So partnership, that's why I'm here. We can only do so much as a federal agency, and we can only do so much in terms of marketing and building awareness. What we really need is people in communities that know what your individual challenges are to help us, to partner with us, to form what we call complete count committees and make sure that we figure out who's out there and count them properly.
I was visiting with friends today, and the phone rang. And the husband took it off into another room and came back a few minutes later. He said, that was the census. I'm hired.
All right.
So I quickly got out my calculator and figured out how much he was going to make over the two months that he was going to be out, making sure that each house had a number and so forth.
That's awesome.
Yeah. It was $4,485.
Not bad. Yeah, and actually, that's one reason Greg's here, is to talk to you about job opportunities.
Yeah.
So we need to educate, encourage, and engage. And for most Americans, I think, it's not going to be a problem. They're just going to do it. The thing will come in the mail, they'll get online, they'll fill it out, and they'll forget all about it by the next day. For other people, there are hesitancies, and so that's why we need to build this engagement. Hard-to-count populations that we're aware of, foreign-born immigrants, A, because they may not understand what the census is or why they want to do it; B, because they might not feel real good about giving information to the government. So that's a challenge for us. We need to hopefully get them comfortable and get them motivated to participate and engage. Children younger than five, I'm not sure why that's such a hard-to-count population. I can visualize instances where there's a divorce and, you know, you get counted at the mom's or at the dad's, and maybe, you know, maybe we overcount them, maybe they don't get counted at all. But that's an area of focus that we want to make sure everybody understands. No, if you're alive on April 1, you get counted. If you're almost nine months pregnant on April 1 and haven't given birth, no, your baby doesn't get counted. But April 1, that's the day. Seniors tend to be hard to count. Possibly because they're not getting out, possibly because they don't have Internet access, possibly because they're in a group living situation and aren't sure where they should be counted. Homeless is a big problem. And again, we need to get the awareness out there and hopefully have an event for them to come to on Census Day Eve. Migrant workers, renters, and folks with low Internet access. So these are things that we just, we want to partner with you to figure out, how can we combat some of this? We have some tools. One is Rome, which allows you to kind of zoom in and see where we think we're going to have hard-to-count, have fewer respondents. And this is largely based on our experience from 2010. Where are the areas where we had to knock on the door three times? And we kind of keep track of that. But it's also, we blend in some statistics from some of our other non-desiannal surveys, survey work. And so with this tool, you can kind of zoom in on Polk County. In fact, I think, ah, I've already done it. I took a screen grab. This is all of Polk County. And you can see kind of off to the right where it's a little darker. These are harder, the lower response rate here, slightly better, slightly better. There's some, we can use this tool to kind of help you figure out where the hard-to-count population is maybe higher. And complete count committees. And I've had a conversation last week with, I guess, Sister City? Is that the right word to use?
That's what we call it.
Over at Independence. And they seem very enthusiastic about forming a complete count committee and do a joint one with Monmouth, I think would be an awesome idea. These are volunteer committees. You can form one, you can be a part of one, you can be part of more than one if there's overlap. If Polk County decides to do one, and you decide to do one, and, yeah, there's no limit to how these things get organized. But we're looking for, you know, we want community leaders to be involved, elected and non-elected, faith-based groups, business councils, et cetera, et cetera. Need to get them involved. And again, we're trying to increase awareness and motivate residents to respond to the census. Ah, and now recruiting.
John is handing out some flyers specific for Polk County, and a specific for Polk County because the salary range differs depending on which area of the state you're in. The salary range is pretty good, I think, hourly wage. What, $17.50 to?
$17.50 to $19.50.
$19.50 an hour. A number of different positions. I'm not sure what position your friend was selected for.
I quoted him $14 an hour, so I don't know what he's going to be doing.
Is he Polk County?
Yeah, he's right here in Monmouth.
Okay, well, he might want to.
Of course, maybe he was lying to us. Maybe he was going to use the extra money for something that he didn't want his wife to know about.
Confidentiality is very important. But the, you know, the type of people they're looking for, the type of people who would have an advantage over others, veterans, you know, which probably didn't hurt me getting my job. I was formerly Army JAG as well. And students, looking for students. And a lot of people who are perhaps retired, may have a little more time on their hands. Those are essentially the population to do, to get. Everyone thinks the job consists of knocking on doors, and that's certainly a part of it, particularly at the later stages when we have non-responses from particular addresses. But a lot of it could be in the office. There's supervisory jobs as well. And that's why I think a lot of people who've been in the military for any length of time, at a certain point, they'll be given some responsibility. And then when you fill out this application, it's all online. It takes about 20 to 25 minutes. You can select, you're also interested in supervisory positions, and your prior experience will help that as well. You mentioned, I believe, about two months. That's the cycle, but it can be renewed. So if you talk to your friend, that doesn't necessarily mean that it ends after two months. And even if it stops for a period of time, if you qualified for a number of different positions, and one of them could be supervisory, for example, your name goes back in the pool. So once you go online and register for this, your name is in the pool. online and register for this, your name is in the pool until the entire census process is over. If they call you and you're doing another job, you don't have the time, you can just say, "Well, I can't do it at this point," and then goes back in the pool. So this is not just for limited period of time. You don't have to keep reapplying. And that's, again, it's online and somewhat flexible hours, up to 35 hours per week, and flexible because particularly at the later stages, when you're going house to house, non-response type situations, people are going to be home in the evenings versus, you know, during the day. But requirements are pretty minimal. You have to be 10 years of old, of age. And you have to be a citizen, although a previous census, that was waived because they needed more workers. There's days that may or may not be waived. If you're born after 1959, you have to register for the draft. And you need a social security number, and that's an email address. So that's essentially the only requirement. And I guess how to use the computer. But if you're not sure, we have people who can help with that as well. People can't use a computer. We have a phone number they can call, and they can walk them through the steps. So I was at the University of Oregon, as well as Oregon State, last week, talking to them. And the Career Centers are very excited because this is a great opportunity for the students. But I think it's, you know, a really good opportunity, particularly at this salary range, for a lot of people. And they're going to be hiring thousands of thousands of people, just outside of Portland area. 10,000 people, they're hoping to apply online. And then, when you count the Portland area, who knows what there'll be. So. And with the economy the way it is, not as many people are looking for jobs. So we do realize that challenge. But hopefully, we'll get enough people to get a complete count, because it really is important for all the things John mentioned, but also for the state and the local economy. Because a lot of, you know, to make sure that Oregon gets -- we get our share of the federal funding.
And you're the manager for the Salem area?
I'm the manager for the entire state of Oregon, it appears.
Oh.
I'm the first manager to be hired. So it really is at the beginning stages, you know, of hiring. So there are going to be more and more people. They're going to be hired, and it's going to ramp up. So it's not the position under my job description. But I'm now manager for the entire state. Unfortunately, there's -- salary does not increase, you know, along with the increased obligations. But it's like the military, you know, you do what needs to be done, and you just say, "Yes, sir," and you go forward.
I just, I know of a -- the YMCA in Salem is going to be destroying their building, and so all of their employees are going to be laid off. They're going to rebuild the building. But everybody's losing their job that works there. So I'll go drop this flyer off for them.
And actually, I have some more. If you don't mind, I can leave them here. You probably know places where these could be of help. We also have these available electronically. And I'm sure John has email addresses. I don't know if you'd be interested in that. But if you could disseminate this by email even, even to local schools, because I think even if, for example, seniors who may not be, or juniors who may not be 18 yet, but if they come of age, you know, become 18 during the process and point, then they'll become eligible. So once they're in the system, it's, they're in the pool.
And you mentioned you visited with University of Oregon and Oregon State, but you haven't visited with Western Oregon University?
I have not. I just started just a couple of weeks ago.
Western Willamette, Schumachada?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we've gone to Schumachada.
Good.
I've contacted Portland State as well. And I live in Corvallis.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Well, we do have our Career Center here on campus as well, that would be glad to do that. And a lot of our students who live here, but we also have a lot of commuter students. So we have some who would be covering other areas potentially for you, so.
I'll call them tomorrow.
Great.
Do you have any questions? Just leave these here, or is there a better place for these?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The census is such a wonderful thing. It's wonderful to look at the ones that were completed in the 19th century and see they were all filled out with a fountain pen and beautiful script handwriting. But one of the censuses was destroyed in a fire. Was it the 1890 census?
I forget the year, but I do remember.
What a tragedy that was.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of this will be maintained on electronic databases.
Yes, a very secure electronic database. Yeah.
I do know there were some questions at the Independent City Council meeting about -- there were concerns about volunteering individuals like us, helping before we know about the 11th question, just given the sensitivity to our community. So you said that would be April, hopefully we'll know?
It's supposedly on the calendar in April. I don't have an exact date. I don't know how flexible those things are. But I'm hoping within a month, we know the answer and we can move forward. For right now, I'm kind of assuming worst-case scenario, that it stays on there. And, yeah, like I said, we can make promises of confidentiality, and I hope that people take that seriously and believe it. I believe it. And then, we also have the idea that, you know, answer as many questions as you can. Yeah, leave it at that.
We could all do that.
That's correct. We all could do that.
And something to that. The Supreme Court will decide for the end of their current term, but that ends at the end of June.
June, okay.
But.
This still doesn't start for?
They do realize the importance of knowing, because the font of the pension and everything. And because of that, that's what it took extra dollars.
All right.
So, yeah, oh, this, the website, which is on your flyer. There are two websites. The temporary jobs are on 2020census.gov. More permanent positions are on USAjobs.gov. And there are a lot of positions, like my position, Greg's position, were advertised on USAjobs. So. And, yeah. So, next steps, let's get a committee going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Very informative.
Any questions?
Nope.
Oh, you're good?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I do have packets for you.
Awesome. Thank you. Ah, great. Business cards. That's terrific.
Yeah, that's good.
More detail on, there's a nice booklet on forming a complete count committee.
Good.
Oh, good. Yeah.
I need them still.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Would you like?
Yes. Why don't we leave those with Phyllis, so we can send folks to her as we recruit them to join us?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just so you know, Karen and I have already agreed to chair the complete count committee for our two cities.
Fantastic.
That's my Karen.
Thank you. Karen Johnson, our city recorder from Independence, who's here tonight. And I was just going to ask that, because I believe the two of you did that 10 years ago.
Oh, goodness. I wasn't involved.
You weren't here? I thought.
I wasn't involved 10 years ago.
Okay. So Karen did. So I was hoping that you'd be stepping up again and getting us connected with folks and us connecting folks to them, so we can take this on.
Thank you, John and Greg. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip ahead just a moment. We do have one speaker tonight. And so I'd like to skip to the citizen comments. Jennifer Kabistev, if you could please come up to the table and give us the city where you live.
Good evening. I live in Monmouth. Been there several months. I actually feel settled finally. So, good evening, Monmouth Council members, Madam Mayor. My name's Dr. Jennifer Kabistev. I'm the superintendent of Central School District. I am here tonight to actually invite you to a community meeting on March 26. The Central School District is in the process of engaging with our stakeholders across both of our communities as we build our strategic plan and accountability system. So I have just a brief flyer to share with you. This meeting would be specific for governmental, both from city council, our city office staff, managers, et cetera, from both cities, both in Independence and Monmouth, as we have a conversation. We are in the process of, as I said, going out to within our community. We have several meetings that is open to all of our community, parents, families, people that don't even have students in our schools. We want to be able to gather information as we build our strategic plan and accountability system. So I just want to share that with you. Our board, this past August, adopted four strategic goals. First one is focused on student growth and achievement. The second one is family involvement. Our third goal is community partnership. And then, our fourth goal is focused on staff leadership and continuous improvement. So we're really building our plan around those four goals as we move forward. And we are wanting input from everyone in the community. And so are really having about 20 meetings over the next month and a half to gather that information. So just wanted to take a moment to share that. I'm going to leave just a small flyer with a date and time, again, for our opportunity to engage with you all at this meeting. So thank you.
So how have the meetings gone so far?
Good. We've had to -- the lovely weather has caused a little bit of an issue, but we've had four meetings. Every meeting, we get a few more people. It's starting to, from a social media, we've received some really good response to get involved, because we are really, it's important for us that we want to listen to the community. We are looking for what are we good at, our strengths, where we might need improvements, because that is always, you know, one of the areas we need to look at.
Critical personal.
As well as other opportunities that we're not thinking about. Because I think the board and myself, as we do this together, because we cannot do it alone. It's the partnerships that we do with different businesses and you all, both, in both towns, is very important to us. So we're just, we've only done our fourth. Tomorrow, we have three. It's a long day tomorrow. But we're excited about the opportunity to continue to gather information, not only from a larger public view, but there are a handful of meetings we are doing and being very intentional with different groups to gather that information. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Have a few brief items for the mayor's report this evening. On Tuesday, the 5th of March, no, that would have been Wednesday. Tonight's Tuesday, the 5th. So this is my notes for tonight. Several of us, including us here, attended the Midlammott Valley Council of Governments' annual dinner, where we saw a really special tribute to Jim Fairchild. So I'm going to take a moment to recognize him as a leader in Polk County. Jim was an icon of public service in our community and in our county. He was a great man. Many people who I know have known him personally. And through Jim's years as a coach, a teacher, a volunteer, and an elected official, he had a great impact on Dallas. So it was really special to be at the Council of Governments meeting, where he was presented, actually with a lifetime achievement award that was named after his predecessor as mayor in Dallas, Gwen Van de Bush. So that's one of the great partnerships we have, and that ability to network with folks like that who inspire us, and be able to honor him. And then, along with Counselor Bellz, I was recognized from the audience as we attended the Independent City Council meeting last Tuesday night. So we saw this same presentation, but we also heard a lot about the things going on in our sister city. And of note, next Tuesday, the Independent City Council actually meets at Central High School. Once a year, they have an 8:30 a.m. meeting in the auditorium at the high school. They invite high school social studies students to be in the audience, and then they take questions from the students as well, and invite prepared testimony. So it is a general public meeting. I'll let you know that the high school is open to visitors. And so if any of us would like to attend, we are certainly invited to attend and be at the auditorium next Tuesday morning at 8:30 to sit through that Independence Council meeting.
And it's my understanding that the Monmouth City Council can't do that?
That's correct.
Because the high school is in Independence?
Correct.
Okay.
We cannot hold a business meeting.
What if we invited a whole bunch of students over here?
We could certainly do that. It's a little tougher to get them here at night, darn it. So.
That's right. That's something to think about.
It's real convenient when they just have to walk down the hall at 8:30.
Or, you could do a joint meeting with Independent City, as long as you're in one of the jurisdictions.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really? Well, that's nice to know.
Well, let's do that.
We've done, we've held those meetings a couple of times over at the fire station, because it is very close to both borders.
It's right on the border, but the station is in Independence.
Part of the property is in there. So, yeah. And we've talked about doing those, resuming those, if we could occasionally. And speaking of our fire district, I was invited to celebrate the staff and volunteers of Polk County Fire District Number One. We had the presentation from Chief Stangy. And so I represented the city at that dinner, which was masterfully prepared and delivered by Darren and Lisa Silbernagle, volunteering to serve a bunch of hungry firefighters and their lovely family members. It was a great celebration of those volunteers and staff who just do so much for our community. And then, Counselor Sharmer and I also represented the city last week at the kickoff meeting for YouthMIKE, which is the Monmouth Independence Youth Council. And this group is facilitated by Ramon Martinez, who's the outreach coordinator for the city of Independence, and also from Maria Lloyd, who is with Community Services Consortium, right? And this group is really about empowering youth to have more of a say in how our community operates. And they will be learning skills. They'll be working on advocacy. They really are talking about sort of the services that they want and need to see in our community. Did you have anything to add from that meeting, Counselor Sharmer?
It was inspiring to see those young people there and not being afraid to tell us, "Back off. This is our meeting. We want to do this ourselves."
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. So that's been my couple of weeks. And now, I know some of us have been busy attending meetings of some of our boards and commissions. So, yes, and I'll do that at the end of the week. And so, Counselor Sharmer, do you have a report on our fabulous seniors?
Our fabulous seniors met on February 26 at the Senior Advisory Board. And I can see why Counselor Silbernagle always loved to go to these meetings. It's a great group of people.
Love it. They're awesome.
On the 21st of March, they will be having their famous soup and pie event. So you may be getting a phone call asking you to donate either some soup or a pie. They'll be having their Victorian tea again in April. And on the 28th of March, the Alzheimer's Association will be presenting a, an event that's called dementia conversation. And it's a conversation you would have with someone else to tell them, "I feel a little bit concerned. I'm starting to have some trouble remembering things. And can you help me?" To how to say those words to someone else. It'll be at 1:30 p.m. on the 28th of March. There was also scheduled a cultural presentation about Africa by John Stark. And they would like to enhance their multicultural events that they have there. And they would like to have that kind of a cultural presentation once a month, maybe twice a month. There's a music class called Song and Sound. It's an hour long. So if you'd like to get out there and sing, go over to your senior center and sign up for that event. And on the 27th, there will be the next meet and greet. So if you want to meet and greet the newest members of the Monmouth Senior Center, you can go over there and do that. There are board members needed. There's two right now, possibly three in the future. And just a quick word about things going, other things going on there at the senior center. We have some rotarians here, and maybe future rotarians here in the audience tonight. And I am taking over as president on July 1. And among my list of projects that I'd like to accomplish this coming year during my presidency is to get together with grant funds to buy the materials, volunteer labor, I'm looking at you, Paul Seber, to build a deck. So that we can do it in an expeditious and conservative way with money. And then, I also have been approached by several people who would like to have multicultural, intergenerational potluck dinners in our two communities, and I mean, actually, three communities, with Woo, Independence, and Monmouth, where people come in and, for Cinco de Mayo, they learn a little bit about that. Maybe they would have a Maybe they would have a Seder at Passover, and so everybody in the community can have a chance to learn about that. Our senior center has volunteered their kitchen and their, their meeting room for that. We could also be having dinners over at the, at the university as well. So, lots of exciting things. I'm happy to be a member of this board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Kerry's not here this evening to give his planning commission report, so Counselor Silbernagle and the Tree Advisory Board.
Great, thank you. I was not able to make the meeting, but I was able to get Suzanne's minutes, so I can share a few things here on the Tree Advisory Board. They met on the 21st of February. They're working on tree labels that could be used to identify the, really all the previous plannings that they've done through the Tree Advisory Board. They're working on a copy, or they, they shared a copy of the Arbor Day Boost Grant, and so they put in for a banner to go across the street outside of City Hall, and also an A-frame, some A-frame signage, basically, that they could use when they have volunteer events. The board discussed a better tracking system to help monitor the maintenance of the street trees. So, everything from tree stakes and, you know, removing them at the right time, pruning, watering, those kinds of things. So, Carol volunteered to review, I guess, the previous board minutes and create a spreadsheet for that. So, that'd be good to get all that put together. And the board reviewed potential planting sites for the Arbor Day this year, so, busy group as well.
Especially coming up towards Arbor Day. Counselor Lopez is not with us this evening, out of town on business for the MINENet report. So, if, Scott, if you can include anything about that in your report, that'd be great. And we are at community announcements. Do we have anything besides all these great Rotary projects that we'll be hearing more about this year?
Oh, and just, if I can add one more thing, we're trying to get a Rotary Act Club started at, at WU. This is a Rotary affiliate for young people between the ages of 18 and 30. And so, if you know young people who might like to take part in all the things that Rotary does, there will be an informational meeting on Friday, this coming Friday, at 6:30 p.m. at the Kalapooia Room at, at WU. So, bring, bring your young people on down.
If I have an event announcement, should I do it now or during Counselor comments?
You can do that now.
Alrighty, so, I wanted to alert people that on Friday, March 15th, there will be a bike walk event that is being cosponsored, uh, here another name, Ramon Martinez. It is 5:30 to 7 o'clock, Independence City Hall. The organization that I work for, Cherry's Trip Choice, we're a cosponsor. So, the local bike shop will be there, the Bike Ped Commission will be there, all sorts of things for children to do. There'll be safety demonstrations, bike repair, we'll have lights and maps and just everything, biking and walking for the community. So, please come down. That is next Friday already. 5:30 to 7, Indy City Hall.
Oh, very cool. When you say next Friday, do you mean?
Friday the 15th.
The 15th, okay.
Yes, sorry.
5:30 to what time?
Seven.
Seven, okay, thank you.
And this Friday is also the Chamber of Commerce Community Awards Banquet. So, many of us will be at that to, again, celebrate sort of the best we have in our community of volunteers and businesses, and really look forward to that. Excited to say that Monmouth will, will definitely walk away with the distinguished service award one way or another, since all three candidates for that are involved with the city of Monmouth. It'll be a fun night for us there. I do have one other issue here tonight, and that is we, we can take care of one of those vacancies on the Senior Advisory Board.
Oh, yay!
We had two applications that had been sent out to all of you. One was for a gentleman named Ned Kenny.
Oh, he was there.
He is interested in an appointment to the Senior Advisory Board. I had a really great visit with him. He's new to our community, came from Wisconsin, I don't know if you noticed the accent, but has been in the community for about four or five years and just, just kind of picked our place and would really like to get to work on the Senior Advisory Board and move that forward. And then...
If I can just say, he jumped in with, with both feet. He's, he's, I asked him to be a judge for the 4th of July parade, so he's going to be judging the highway trucks.
Perfect. He also doesn't work for Mont Mayor, so he, he's quite our greeter for folks who are visiting our town and staying in our bed and breakfast and getting, getting them acclimated to the community. And another new citizen, very new citizen, Odie Campos, has moved, was on the Independent City Council, has been very engaged as a townie, I call them, right? Grew up here and is the director of the Oregon Child Development Coalition in Independence. He is, has moved to Monmouth and is willing to step forward, has put in an application to join the Parks and Rec Board. So, thank you, Phyllis, for that recruitment. And I present those two appointments to you and would appreciate your acceptance of them.
You approve of both.
Seconded.
House of Bill seconded? Sorry, I can't hear.
It's all right, I was mumbling.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of our two new victim, uh, me, Victor Sears. We're being regarded. All right. Thank you. I would welcome, heartily welcome Ned Kenny and Odie Campos to our boards and commissions to continue their great service, so thank you very much. And now, Scott, for your report, please.
Yep, so, MINENet, pretty short meeting, kind of routine numbers as far as finances goes, customers, everything's pretty stable there. We did go into executive session, talk about a legal case, as you recall, a while back, one of our lines was cut, and we're still working through the process with the contractor that did that. They're being less than generous with what they're offering, MINENet, for the damages, so we'll get that one worked out. And then, on the XGpon conversion, we're working up the option of potentially getting a line of credit, and it looks like they actually do have a pathway for that. So, once we get that figured out, really what the best options are, we'll come back, probably at your next council meeting, and walk through what, what we want to go on that, so.
Great.
Then, other stuff, Monmouth Power and Light Headquarters, they're actually in the process of moving, actually the offices are moved. It's going to take a while to do the yard. That was actually interesting, even with the rate that we pay a lineman, it was cheaper for our own people to do rather than a moving company. It's just amazing how that goes. But, so we're just going to take our time, it'll take a month or something, but it'll get all over there. But we are having a grand opening on the 20th at 1:30, and that'll be the really official ribbon cutting. At a later date, when they get really everything set up, then they'll have a community open house, like on a weekend, when people can come a little more accessible. And then, the CIS had a conference, I have a board meeting attached to that, being a trustee. And one interesting one we did was actually took our property, kind of all of our liability funds, they're actually separately accounted for. Workers' comp is struggling right now because SAFE is taking a lot of our customers because they can, they're good and they're big, they can give good prices, and so it's, it's hard to compete. But, to backstop all the funds, we actually took some old funds that had been rolled out, settlements, different things, and actually added a layer. But actually, any of the funds, we can hit at a certain level, and so instead of a direct drain on those funds, it kind of goes to that special pocket first, you draw it out of there, and we'll be able to draw that down over time to actually support and then provide some stability amongst the funds. And so, that was a nice policy decision there. Then, an interesting topic amongst the regular topic was cybersecurity. And Counselor Sharmer, one of the notations was, is one of the weakest access points in your system is the humans clicking on little links and things.
Oh, yes, that's right. So, don't click on those links.
Yeah, and it was, it was pretty amazing, just the things they went over. The one expert, he took somebody's iPhone, asked him strange questions like your dog's name, where you went to high school, da, 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 and then unlocked the phone. And just went through a sequence, I don't know what it was, there's some magic trick that goes with it. But, he did talk all the different things, and they're talking, the interesting one that was an interesting concept was, they're, the concept right now is all the Internet of Things devices.
Right.
And, and they said that they call it seeding, because all the hackers love it right now. We're infiltrating these things all through our houses, and none of them have even the ability to have security on them.
No, they, no passwords on your Nest doorbell or your Alexa.
So, they're, they're just enjoying it right now, and then when they want to, they'll, they'll activate all those, interesting way to pathway, the Target breach. The Target breach was the HVAC company that monitors the thermostats on the systems, they, the hackers went in through that seam and then got into the main data bank for Target. You know, so then that goes back to your contractors, your subcontractors, anybody that touches your system, you better make sure what their security protocols are.
My goal in all of this is to bore them to death.
There you go.
At the school district, schools around the state, we're having a conversation this week because of some amazing new hacking attempts, including a, an employee's email got hacked, that, then the person, the impersonator, sent an email to the HR department, payroll department, requesting a change of bank for direct deposit, had the, had gotten into the person's personnel access to their, to their employee's system, changed it so that they wouldn't get a bounce back of email from the payroll department saying, oh, confirm this or deny this, and then got, got ahead, went ahead and got that person's direct deposit changed. Now, so that, so we're saying, verify everything. If you're in a system where you do things by email, verify. And another one then today came out, somebody requesting a verification of employment, which is, if, if you've ever been in a HR department, you get these things, please verify that this person worked here. This was their salary, this is their information. And one of our very big sister districts here in the valley only caught it because the employee's name was spelled wrong, but it was a signature that looked very much like the employee's signature, but they figured the person would have spelled their own name correctly. So, hacking is crazy.
Scoundrels.
Yeah, right? So, very good.
Yep, then other things, Willamette Valley Fiber, which is our company, we're setting up, attached to MINENet, actually had their grand opening, really big, nice grand opening, and, and they are, are providing services now.
Not in my neighborhood.
Aren't they on Shutterly Lane?
Yeah, so they're actually rolling things out, so they're, that's, that's going well and getting a lot of buzz in the community. And if you think about it, they've actually got their office set up, essentially like an AT-Tier Verizon store, and including, the, the techs are mobile, they can come out and sit at you at the table and write up your order and do all these things. And then, in contrast, that your other providers, when you go to their, oh, they don't have an office. So, that'll be a nice advantage for Willamette Valley Fiber, so, yeah, that'll be good. Then, Tree City USA on that, actually 17 years, we got certified there. And then, Public Works Department, we're, we're down our project supervisor that just retired, so we got a gap there. Then, we just lost a 27-year employee, Ed Alvarez, so he retired, and we probably have one more coming right behind him that's in that same time zone. You know, they're getting up there in years and saying, hey, I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to leave. So, yes, we'll continue to have some gaps there. Then otherwise, the water filtration system is working right. We still got some issues on the pre-filter, which is just keeps, you know, things out from the main filter. The main filter's working fine, but we got some issues there. And then, the stormwater study is actually in progress, so we're working on that, so.
And the Oregon Health Authority is okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the filters?
The main filter, the, the pre-filter just keeps the stuff out of the good filters that are more expensive. It's just like any kind of air, air filters, a lot of times have a little pre-filter than your main filter, and so.
I had just, I just have one question, if I may. I got a letter from MINENet yesterday saying that my price is going up.
We do too.
$4.65 a month. It doesn't say why, it talks about the cable TV and why that is going up, but it just says, in addition, all our data prices are also going up. Any idea of why, what's going on there?
Yeah, just, just trying to, you know, cable's real easy, it's just, we're just absorbing the rate increases. And then, on the internet side, stronger service, we looked at what the market was, and we thought we could do a bump, generate some more money for the system. And one thing is, is that case actually having the customers pay rather than the cities indirectly, you know, doing the backfill on things, so, trying to balance everything. You can blame Counselor Lopez. Oh, I don't think he was there when it happened.
No.
Yeah, price is going up. We're all faced with that. We have one business agenda item this evening, and then, just to let you know, we are going to adjourn, but stay here to go into our Urban Renewal Agency agenda because, lo and behold, they have the same agenda.
Exactly, agenda item.
Items, so. We will invite our lovely finance director, Janet Shinnard, please let us know what's going on with our audit firm contract.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I am bringing forward to you a proposal. As you know, I can't believe it myself, but we've been two years already with these auditors, and we have a third year as part of our contract. So, we have an option at this time to either go out and do another RFP, to look at auditors again, or to extend. We did build in an extension into this contract as a, as a potential, but then we have to look at pricing. And I did ask the firm, you know, what they'd be willing to offer us, and they were very reasonable about it because they were the low bid last time, and they are offering to extend for an additional two years for just a 2% increase. It seems like a bit of a no-brainer to me, simply because it does take time to, for a firm to get to know you well enough to, you know, to be able to do good things. And, and we have worked very well together so far. I mean, they've, they've been very helpful and very proactive and very conscientious in the way that they've worked with us and, and helped us make some improvements in our processes. And so, I would like to propose that we do that extension of the contract, and I've given you a copy of the contract, but I'm willing to consider other options if you so choose.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Is it generally recommended that municipalities change their auditors every five, seven years or so?
So, I would say that it is a best practice to look at changing your auditors at least every five years. And so, by that, I would say, you know, I would want to go out for another RFP in five years, just honestly to, to keep their pencils sharp and their minds sharp and, and make sure that they're doing the best job for you that they possibly can. It's, it's like any of the big contracts that you have, you want to make sure that you're, you're getting the best bang for your buck.
And at the end of this two-year contract, we will have been using them for four years?
I know, with this two-year extension, it'll be five years.
Five years, okay.
Yeah, it will be five years. And so, my plan is, you know, barring anything unforeseen that I, you know, five to seven is, is still reasonable, but I, you know, I don't want to do 20 years again.
Right.
I will be, I will be looking very seriously at it in five years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this? Once again, we're going to note that I am not related to the firm of Coons Purdue Blasquez, now known as Coons Blasquez. So, as soon as he retires and gets his name off the audit firm, I can stop making the declaration that I'm not related to him. Counselor Silbernagle's been through this a lot in his lifetime of, of audits for public entity, and as have I, and I think this con, I mean, the, the price is amazing. Thank you for negotiating that. That's a great deal to be able to continue that. And as you say, the turnover is costly, us, not only an auditor learning our business, but us learning them, right?
Always tough the first year especially.
Right. And with this particular firm, what I really have appreciated, having worked with other audit firms over my career, is that we've had virtually no turnover in two years already on our team, which never happens, as I've experienced. So, I've been really pleased with the continuity and so that they are learning the way we work and, and thereby being able to help us better.
Especially when we're a relatively smaller client, right?
Exactly.
Typically, we get the newbies and that, that we, you get those every couple of years. Any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain the recommendation, motion.
The motion's not written here, so.
We're just going to figure it out. We don't have to move.
We should have a motion.
Should we? All right.
I move that we extend KBA's service contract for the audit for an additional two years.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to extend the contract with KBA for an additional two years. And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You got it. Okay. I will do a quick council comments, and then we'll put on our URA hats, so, any additional council comments this evening?
Well, yeah, you know, I, I have my usual comment, comments. It was last June that we were first notified that there are basketball hoops blocking sidewalks and streets in Monmouth. Today, I was, I received a photograph... Today I was, I received a photograph of a basketball hoop that was not only blocking the sidewalk, but there was a big rocking chair sitting next to it. And it was, um, last June when I was notified that a number of people in Monmouth have been, had to dip into their, uh, life savings to pay to repair our sidewalks. So by my count, that is two-hundred-and-forty-eight days of inaction on the part of this council.
Anyone else? Thank you. You're very welcome. As we discussed at our last work session, uh, we, we did go around and kind of take the temperature of the group, and everyone felt comfortable with the-
Would be inaction.
-work that we're doing to move towards action, so. Alright, that being said, I will adjourn the city council meeting, and we will, um, let's go right to the urban renewal, if that's okay, without a break. I will adjourn the city council meeting, and, um, we have a slightly different roll call, so please, Ms. Bowman.
My paper, sorry, she wasn't ready for me. Mr. Carey is absent. Mr. Lopez is excused. Dr. Scharmer?
Present.
Mr. Schinkel is excused. Mr. Silbernagle?
Here.
Ms. Beltz?
Here.
Chairman Kuntz?
Here.
Don't believe we have any citizen comments for this particular part of the meeting, and so we move straight to the consent agenda. On this agenda is the approval of the minutes of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, last held November sixth of twenty-eighteen. Those minutes were included in your packet, so I'm, I move to approve, second. Moved in seconded to approve those minutes in that consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any non-opposed? So, we'll move to our business agenda of the Urban Renewal Agency, which is an audit services contract extension proposal.
So, for the record, I would like to recommend that we extend our three-year audit contract to five years, um, and an additional two years, and again, uh, we, as with the city's contract, we will get a two percent bump, but it is very reasonable for a slim document and not that much work, but it is a, it is a good, uh, a, a good job that they do with that as well, and so I would recommend that.
Any discussion?
Just play it back for us.
We could.
Well, I've got to say, I move approval that we, that we, uh, extend the KBA's service contract for two additional years for a total of five.
Second.
Moved in seconded to have the Urban Renewal Agency retain the services of audit firm KBA, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, so, thanks, and thank them for their good work, and we'll get that taken care of. Alright, um, now I'm going to convene the work session, and we only have one item tonight, so is everyone okay with just kind of staying here?
Absolutely.
And getting through that, sorry, our lovely camerawoman, who normally gets to leave about this point, but, uh, I, I will call to order the Monmouth City Council Work Session of Tuesday, March fifth, and we only have one thing on our, uh, business agenda planned this evening, and that is an update to an ordinance we passed during my time on council, and, uh, if you can talk to us, Scott, about the drug paraphernalia ordinance.
Yes, thank you. So where this, where this came from is we actually had a, a business registration come through for a smoke shop, so the entire intent of the business was a smoke shop. As it was going through, it was flagged, well, we have an ordinance that says you can't display anything related to smoking or vaping, et cetera, which would seem to be difficult if you're a smoke shop. And so we said, "Okay, that's an interesting one, we probably need to address that", and then we started going, you know, wheels spun a little bit more, it's like, "Oh, we have marijuana shops that are displaying smoking devices, so they're actually out of compliance too". It's like, that's dysfunctional too, because that's the intent of the store in a lot of cases, so, we went forward and looked at our ordinance and said, "Okay, what do we do"? Now, the, the key thing is, the original intent was we had, we had, uh, pipes and various things showing up at convenience stores, and the idea was a miner that's just there to buy a candy bar or whatever, doesn't need to look at that, so we put the ordinance in place. And so the way we've adjusted this is, is to keep that kind of hierarchy involved. If it's a place where a miner really shouldn't see it, the rule stays in effect. If it's a business, like a marijuana-based business, or the smoke shop where the intent of that is smoking, the reason you would go into that store, then we would actually call those off. The one we, we put in a stipulation, um, you just go to state statute for the marijuana shop, so if you're legally designated, you're fine. The one on the smoke shop, a little different, 'cause-
Right.
-you could have different things in there, so what we did is we, we put in a seventy-five percent figure, so it's, the idea is predominantly, they might have a couple ancillary things, but we also don't want them going the opposite direction of only selling, you know, uh, you know, a couple little items, and then, and then there's all this other stuff in the store. So then you are enticing miners and the general public into your store for other reasons, so we, we put that stipulation in. So, um, that's how, as it's set out, uh, Lane worked really good with, uh, Daryl, so the police department has an ability to enforce. Uh, the one thing, like on the seventy-five percent, we have the ability to ask for documentation. So if, you know, we ask for the documentation, we get their books, and, you know, they have all these other things in the store, and they're only doing twenty-five percent of their sales, we'd say, "Well, you're not exempt anymore", and so then that stuff needs to go back behind closed doors again. So if, um, if, if this works out okay, got, got this in front of you because it was something new, then we'd like to bring it forward, we'd like to be responsive. The smoke shop is actually trying to open, and we told them, "We, we, it's a little bit of time here, we're being very quick with this, but it still takes a little bit of time. If everybody was okay with this moving forward to the next time, we'd probably do the two readings and then drop the thirty days."
And, um, where is the shop going in?
Uh, up on the, the little cluster there, the, um, rental services.
Oh, right, in the-
Yeah, right, right at the corner, one used to be the Christian bookstore.
Monmouth and May.
It was there for a long time, so.
Yeah, and again, the original idea was, we started having more of the little mini-marts, and they were displaying bongs and drug paraphernalia right up on the counter, and we felt that was pretty inappropriate for minors, so we created an ordinance that, uh, I, I just noticed in a mini-mart in Independence doesn't exist over there, apparently, so. So, any other-
Comments or questions about this? Well, I, I would just like to say that, um, there is probably only one thing that those of us in public health and the tobacco companies are in agreement with, and that is that if you tell kids they can't do something, or you hide something from them, they'll really, really want to do it, so, I think it would be a good idea to have these smoking devices displayed in the stores and having old people use them. That'd really turn kids off.
How about pictures of the blackened lungs? That's what turned me off.
That doesn't work.
I went to Omsi, and boy, I saw that blackened lung, and I was done. I never smoked a day in my life.
So a motion to be appropriate just to direct preparation of an ordinance.
So a motion to continue, to bring us back that, uh, change?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll, I'll move this staff prepare an ordinance, uh, to present to, um, council to allow, uh, smoking-related devices to be on display in establishments that sell smoking devices as long as it's not more than seventy-five percent of the materials they have for sale. Was that even close?
Yeah, I guess, I get the drift.
Okay.
You'll see an ordinance.
Okay, good, good.
We'd like to see an ordinance here.
We knew what you wanted.
We, we will, uh, move in second to bring us back an ordinance with this language looks pretty good to us generally, and, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, so thank you for that work, and we'll expect to see that back and try to get that through for our, uh, new business that's coming in. That said, is there any, uh, the only other, one other piece of business you noticed in front of you tonight was the, um, resolution that, uh, was adopted in September twenty, uh, twenty of eighteen, so up to September eighteenth, regarding the, uh, collaboration with the City of Independence and with Western Oregon University to secure funding for a feasibility study of a trolley system between downtown Monmouth and downtown Independence. And the reason that I asked this to be brought back was because we have gotten word that, uh, funding is being secured, and I wanted to make sure that, uh-
Thank you.
-we're still all in favor of this and supportive of this idea. I think it's gotten some traction, um, with, you know, citizens in general, with, um, some of our sort of business partners and folks to start thinking about it, and, uh, glad to hear that. Did you have some more details on the funding, or, or Roxanne, did you hear anything else?
Well, the only information I have is that, um, if we want the money, I have to make sure that both mayors and both city managers are dressed in Western gear, um, at the opening, at the grand opening of the trolley.
We were told that was what it was.
And I, I even volunteered to make the Western stuff, I'm so excited about it.
I was gonna say, if she sews me something-
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second that volunteer, I'll help as well.
Okay, I, I'll do it, I'll do it.
I got awesome boots I can loan you.
Okay, that's good. So anyway, I think that's great news, we just wanted, I just wanted to update that, bring that forward, that, uh, our, our support-
It's ready to roll, sorry about the metaphor, but it's ready to roll.
And I'd like to thank Representative Evans, Paul Evans, for, for championing-
Championing this and, um, pushing it through so far, so, it's very exciting.
Yep.
More work to do.
And you never know, once that trolley's in place, there might actually be some parking spots at Woo during the day.
Correct. And we'll get back and forth better on the Fourth of July.
Absolutely.
Any other business this evening before we adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.